The Planning Commission meeting of April 3, 2019 will come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary will call the roll.
Commissioner Volson?
Here.
Commissioner Castleton?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Vice Chair Man?
Here.
Here. I see Commissioner Rice wore his Jerry Garcia tie today. He must be a very important meeting.
Just for you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. Okay, may I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
May I motion to approve the agenda?
Your second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Mann, seconded by Commissioner Tolson. Absent objection, the agenda is approved as written. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Chairperson Hodge, I'd like to make a correction to the minutes of March 13th.
Yes.
On page three of the minutes, down in the bottom column, it starts off Commissioner Hodge, and it should read Commissioner Rice.
On which page?
It's the third page down at the bottom. It's about the eight-foot fence. Last paragraph.
Ms. Smith, if we could have that modified before it's submitted. Any other changes?
I have one change as well.
Commissioner Castleberry?
On the second page in the first paragraph, under ex parte communications, the name of the gentleman I met with is Mac, with a C, M-A-C, not Matt.
Very good. Any other corrections? May I have a motion for approval of the minutes as amended?
Move to approve the minutes as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Castleberry. Absent any objection, the minutes as amended are approved. Declaration of conflict. The secretary will read the declaration of conflict.
If any member of the Planning Commission may have a conflict of interest or any reason why not, member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this subject. Please address your concerns.
Anyone declaring a conflict? Seeing none, we'll press forward. Public statements. This is the time allotted for the public statements or comments on all items other than public hearing items. I have no cards. If there are persons here who wish to speak on something other than the continued business item, this would be your opportunity to do so. You actually may speak on the continued business item. If you wish, we would prefer that you defer until the time of that hearing. Anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll go forward. Correspondents, is there any correspondence from the deputy director, city planner?
Yes, thank you Chairman Hodge. On the dais tonight, you'll find a memo with one letter that we received from Mr. and Mrs. Callahan regarding their support of tonight's project, and a copy of which was left out on the front table.
Very good. Consent calendar. Clearly, there are no consent items today, so we can pass on that. Continued business. This is the time and place, set for a hearing, set for the continued public hearing on consideration of GPA 92, ZS 712, TT 5916, PDS 1025, the project's mitigated negative declaration, and the mitigation monitoring plan. Are there any ex parte communications to purport?
None.
None.
I have one. I had a chance to speak with Joe Scavo by telephone. Okay, may we have an oral report of this matter from staff?
Thank you Chairman Hodge. At the previous meeting on February 6th, the Planning Commission heard the presentation by the Applicant Kingdom Builders for the project at the terminus of Lemon Drive and Walnut Street. At that meeting, the Planning Commission continued the item after taking public testimony and decided to have the applicant examined, adding affordable housing component to the project. Since that time, the applicant has worked with staff. He submitted a letter that's included in your packet tonight, and staff will be making a presentation summarizing what's changed since the last meeting. And I'll be introducing senior planner Sean Gibson to provide the staff report. Sean?
Good evening. The Applicant Kingdom Builders, LLC proposes to construct a 51-unit senior townhouse complex on a vacant 12.56-acre site at the northern terminus of Lemon Drive at Walnut Street slash Presidio Drive. The project includes a general plan amendment, zone change, tenant of tract map, and plan development permit. To recap, the overall site plan is shown here.
We're out of them out there.
The request would change the site density from low to moderate density and include permanent open space in the northwesterly portion of the site. With development of the site, the eastern terminus of Presidio Drive will connect to the western terminus of Walnut Drive. The leg of Walnut Street that currently veers down towards Lemon Drive would be abandoned, and Lemon Drive would become a full cul-de-sac. The Presidio Drive connection is required by the city's general plan mobility element master circulation table. At the February 6, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, the item was continued to allow the applicant time to investigate the feasibility of providing affordable units. Attached with the staff report, the applicant submitted a response letter addressing the public's comments and various issues, and indicating that they would not pursue affordable units. However, in response to the public comments at the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant is now providing a new spa area on the south side of the project, 12 additional parking spaces, and will be providing solar panels for each of the 51 units. The amended northerly site plan is shown here. Highlighted are the locations of the nine additional parking spaces in response to various comments raised about possibility of insufficient parking. For the south side of the project, the applicant is providing three additional parking spaces and adding the spa gathering area near the south, subtle the end of that portion of the site. This spa area would be an amenity to the residents of the 10 units south of Presidio, which would not necessitate traversing across the street to the main amenities to the north. With the site updates, the 12 additional parking spaces bring the parking count up to 111 spaces, which exceed the code-required 51 minimum parking spaces. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend to the city council approval of GPA 92, ZS 712, TT 5916, PDS 1025, and the mitigated negative declaration. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Questions of staff? I have one. Mr. Gibson, at the last hearing, there was at least one portion of the conversation where, I can't remember who it was who asked the question, but it went to the issue of whether or not the developer, the applicant, and the owner of the property might be able to sell the property in the future, and someone would be able to, under the moderate density, be able to come in with another project with a different vision, with up to 10 units per acre. And as I recall, we had some conversation about whether or not the zoning modification, if ultimately provided, could be deed restricted, so it would be able to carry a maximum seven units per acre and not the 10 that the zoning would otherwise call for. And as I recall, the discussion was that that could be done. Did you have any discussion with the applicant regarding deed restricting the property to seven units maximum?
Chairman Hodge, there was no specific conversation regarding deed restricting the site for the number of units. It is deed restricted for senior units, as previously in the current conditions. There was not a specific discussion, to my recollection, on the conditional zoning, but that certainly could be added if desired.
So between this meeting and tonight, there's been no, you've not had that discussion with the people from the applicant?
I don't recall a specific discussion on restricting the density.
Very good. I have no further questions at this time. Thank you very much. A few cards up here. Very good. So at this time, we will open the public portion of the hearing. Would the applicant like to present the project? I have a card from Gonzalo Pedrosso, who is the architect.
The applicant would also like to distribute some additional materials. Can I just show them?
Have you made those materials available to the public out on the?
Not yet.
Generally speaking, if you present materials to the commission, my preference, and this isn't a rule, that it may be made available to the public as well, so if you have copies, I'd request that you put them out on the?
We have extra.
We have extra copies? Excellent. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gibson. You have 15 minutes.
Is that my screen? There we go. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. It's good to see you all again. I'm Gonzalo Pedrosso with GP Architecture, and I'm here with the applicant, Mike Rovner of Kingdom Builders. We'd like to thank the commission for your recommendations and staff for working together with us on this project. I'd like to do a brief overview of the project and address the changes made after our last hearing on February 6th. Walnut Hill Senior Village is a 55 and over community that will consist of 51 townhomes arranged in two lots. The site is 12.56 acres, and the applicant is preserving 3.7 acres as permanent open The project is made up of one- and two-bedroom units. All units, including the two bedrooms, have a fully ADA compliant master suite and bath on the first floor, designed for accessibility. The two bedrooms also include a bonus area loft and extra bedroom on the second floor. The design style is influenced by Spanish admission architecture. We wanted to address the following changes that the Planning Commission recommended at our last hearing on February 6th. Guest parking. There was a desire to increase the number of guest parking spaces. Adding amenities on Lot 2, there was concern about the lack of amenities, and solar power. Request to provide solar for energy efficiency. Guest parking. After review of the site, we were able to add another 12 guest parking spaces, those are the ones in yellow, and for a total of 111 spaces, without any major impacts to landscaping or unit layout. As Mr. Gibson mentioned, 12 of the spaces, nine were added to Lot 1, the upper area, and three added to the lower area. Lot 2 amenities, we added a spa, barbecue, and small gathering area to Lot 2, the lower southern parcel containing 10 homes. Along with the new spa, barbecue, and gathering area, a screen wall and landscape buffer are incorporated into the design to help maintain privacy for both Lemon Drive residents and Lot 2 project residents. These added features help make Lot 2 a standalone community, reducing the need of residents having to cross Presidio Drive. In addition, CCNRs will include a limitation on hours of use to reduce noise and the disturbance of adjacent neighbors. All units will have solar power by roof-mounted solar panels. I'm going to, oh, additional comments that came up were earthquake, fire safety, and noise. These concerns are being addressed by meeting code requirements, proper sighting of the project, and CCNRs. Traffic has been and will be addressed by city's traffic engineer. Following is a short video that, whoops, I went too far. Anyways, this is a short video, kind of recapping the project. We can see some of the fuel-mot areas, the four-dimensional architectural articulation. We did have the artist revise the video to kind of reduce the trees a tad. This is going up driveway A, the main entry into the project. This is example of the areas around the driveway. Most of the buildings have more possible courtyard entries. This is an example of a courtyard situation, and we can see both the Spanish and Mediterranean And gathering areas. At this point, I would like to hand off the presentation to Mr. Rovner. He's got some additional comments he would like to review.
I'd like to say thank you to the Commissioners for hearing us again and postponing it, for us to take a look at some of the items and address some of the things that were talked about in the last meeting in February. And I'm gonna, we sent most of these to you, are in your packet. I will gloss over a few of them, but I think we have enough copies for everybody in the back also. One comment was made or was asked, that Mike Rovner Construction Incorporated, which is our construction arm of our company, did not have, or there was a concern that we lacked the experience. We do feel like the point is moot, because the project will be, will have a set of plans with permits, and there will be inspections and such, but I did also put in the packet for you guys, our experience of our team, which has 100 years of experience on our team, and we do tremendously hard projects. I mean, one of the most recent projects that we did was, we took a movie theater and turned it into a 69-unit apartment building, and it literally had never been done before. And so, and probably never should have been done before, or should never be done again after that. And my wife made the comment, she asked me, she said, "Mike, why can't you just do some easy things? Why does everything have to be difficult?" And even this project falls into that place where everybody said that it couldn't be built, and we just had a desire to build on this property. So I have in your packet that, with our experience of our company. I really, when it was asked, I didn't really know how to answer it. It's been a lot of years since somebody actually said that our company couldn't do something because some of the things that our company has done over the last few years. One of the questions also brought up was that, is there really a need for this in Simi Valley? And so we did, we did a ton of research, and we gave you our research, and really, the truth of the matter is, there's not a lot of properties like this or projects like this. There's actually three, is it, there's actually two projects in Simi Valley that match this. So there's not a lot of data about this type of project, and we do believe it is somewhat cutting-edge to have an active senior that's market rate. We did do some research on just the population growth, and in five years, there will be 31,709 people 55 and over in Simi Valley. And that's without any new people moving to Simi Valley. In 10 years, there will be over 40,000 people in this city that are over 55, and that's without one person moving to the city. So the projects in Simi Valley that are like this is Casa Flores, which is a gated community on the northeast corner of Stow and LA Avenue, and it's 103 paired duplex homes, single and multi-story. And then there's one other in Wood Ranch, 525 Country Club Drive, and it's 58 single-story seniors. In speaking with several Simi Valley-based real estate agents, the resounding response is there is a real estate need for market-rate senior homes available for purchase. They have reported much interest from potential buyers in the area seeking these types of homes, but there's limited inventory which fails to meet the demand. There are an average of 20 to 30 showings of each available unit, and they sell quickly. Sales statistics are skewed due to the lack of this type of housing for sale, and the fact that they do not come on the market as frequently as non-age-restricted housing. The most requested and desirable attributes that were told us are open floor plans, updated design, energy efficiency, all of which are incorporated in our project, and I just know a lot. Do this and trying to get done, we probably get maybe three calls a month, people asking us, when will the project be done? My mother lives, I live in the area, and my mother is looking to move somewhere out of her big home. So we sent responses to most of the questions or concerns asked. There were a few that we didn't. One of the ones that we didn't, I started to do the research on it, but it was kind of ridiculous. One of the comments was that seniors bring in more crime, so I didn't do, didn't do any to that one, because I thought it was. But one was, so when the project was first, now on the affordability, we did do a study, and the numbers are extremely tight. Even in the last seven years since we started the project, or started looking at the project, seven years ago, construction costs have gone up by almost double, permit costs and everything have gone up by double. But when the project was first proposed and brought to the city council pre-screening meeting, there was never any suggestion that this project would contain an affordable component. The project was designed from the very beginning as market rate, with specific clientele in mind. Current homeowners looking to downsize from their larger family homes, but seeking high-quality, spacious homes with neighbors of the same age and socioeconomic backgrounds. So some of the things that were asked in the last meeting were on fire safety, which we've addressed. There, the exterior of the homes will be stucco with concrete tile roofs, and there will be sprinkled, there'll be entirely sprinklered, and the mandatory brush clearances around the project will create an added buffer between the existing neighbors and the hillside open space. We showed you about the additional parking, and then also the lack of amenities on the lower section, we added to that. And one of the comments that was made, that I just really didn't understand exactly how to address it, was that someone had said, "We just love looking at this beautiful hillside." So just yesterday, maybe someone could bring that face up for me. Yesterday, I just sent one of my guys out to show what it actually looks like, and I don't know, I think maybe some of you guys have seen the area, and so, but this is the way it actually looks. So the one, all the concrete, it's, that's, is it, become like a, the whole zone is a dumping zone there, and if you look at...
Please let him speak, let him speak.
We, these are, these are pictures that we took actually yesterday. That, and then our property, the fencing on it is, twice a year, we have to redo the fencing, and what I actually did was put cable up the last time to, these pictures were actually taken yesterday. So on the side, you can see that concrete's dumped, and then if you look at the one side where the street is, and I'm gonna just walk over there.
This right here, the end of the street where we'll be connecting it, this is often a dump zone, and this just happened to be a micro bear that was kind of just going, was gonna go on the project.
Mr. Rovner, anyone who's watching the meeting can't hear you.
Sorry, Alan. Oh, cheers. So I just wanted to show you what it actually looks like, because one of the comments was that it's a beautiful hillside, and so, and that they just love to look at that area. Another one is the earthquake damage concerns. Several neighbors shared their experience of damage to their homes in prior earthquakes. Many of the surrounding homes, many of their surrounding homes were built before extensive soil testing was required, and were not built according to the stringent current, today, building and standards that are required to accommodate seismic activity, including additional grading. On this property, there'll be additional grading, there'll be post-tension slabs, and additional compaction to the soil that's not on the homes that are built in the area. See, the two-story units are not conducive to seniors. All units in this project have the master bedroom and bathroom on the first floor. So it's completely, so anyone can completely live on the first floor. The second-story ones that have a unit are for if someone that's 55 and over has an office, or they might have a caregiver that lives at their home with them, or their grandkids are coming to visit them. And so also, we did add, we did hear you guys about solar. We were strongly considering solar before. We know that it's gonna be required on 2020, and we had always wanted to do solar, so we did add the solar end. And thank you guys again for hearing us.
Mr. Rovner, would you be willing to answer a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Rovner?
Yes.
Well, I get to ask questions first, okay? All right, so, Mr. Rovner, I may ask you a couple of questions. First of all, are you this, this creation of this, I don't know exactly what to call it, I'll call it a berm, that is going to be, there's a wall in front of the property between the buildings and the street, correct?
Yes.
And that wall is between 18 and 23 feet high?
Correct.
Now, any of the, essentially what you're doing is, you're trying to level the property so that you can put these properties there without having to have them too much terraced, although I did see in the video, there was, there's at least one terracing that I could tell.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
The reason why, and Gons, maybe you can help me, or Judy, you can help me with this, the reason why it's being built up so high, it's mainly for the, us putting in the street, is my understanding.
Yeah, it is a hillside, and so it's been designed to sort of balance out the site. So unfortunately, even though from the street, it may look like it's a gentle taper, it's actually a pretty significant taper. So in order for the slope at the open space area to be stabilized, and in order for the site to kind of balance out, this retaining wall needed to be placed for it to work. So what we chose for the retaining walls, it's called the Vidura Wall, and it's designed to accept landscaping. So the idea is that there would be a ground cover type element that would cover that wall and sort of buffer it. So you're not gonna be looking at a CMU block wall, it's going to be a wall that's sort of tapered, that has plants on it, that over time will grow, and then the parkway's also gonna have landscaping, trees and such, that'll also help buffer it. So we were sensitive of that, we worked, you know, to try and make it as soft as possible. We do think that the homes being up higher, the one-plus thing is that, you know, they're kind of removed from view for the neighbors that are down below, the people, it's set back about 104 feet, I think, from the south right-of-way, and another 10 feet from the top of that retaining wall, and so it's, it's basically, they're not gonna be looking down on anybody, they're gonna be looking out at the horizon as far as those residents. And per our, when we showed this on February 6th, we had laid out the project, the buildings, so that the short side was perpendicular to Presidio, so that again, there was a minimal amount of windows on that exposed side. It wasn't backyards and patios looking down over the slope, it was really the side of the house, and that way, not only from a massing standpoint, would it be sort of a thinner profile, again, being sensitive to... being sensitive to the neighbors that are down at the south, but it would also, you know, create some privacy too, so.
All right, so the height that was ultimately determined, 18 to 23 feet, that was essentially necessary to make it reasonably level for the distance back that you wanted to go into the hillside, correct?
Yes, yeah.
All right, was any, please, just, I'm going to ask these questions, you know, hopefully I get a yes or no answer, so we can move forward, there's a lot of people want to speak. Were any other height considerations provided? For example, what, did you take a look at what you, how far you'd be able to go back if you only went up 10 feet, or if you only went up 15 feet?
Yes.
And so, would you have been able to, how many units would you have been able to put in if you went up 15 feet instead of 18 to 23?
The issue was that the retaining wall at the backside of the site would have been huge, humongous, in order to stabilize that slope back there.
But you wouldn't be going back as far, so why would it, why would it be taller than it would be if, I see, because you go up 23 feet, you're, you're raising the height to the back of that as well. But if you don't go back as far, if you only go up, say, 10 feet, then you wouldn't be going back as far, and the slope would be able to take care of itself. Is that accurate?
I'm not a civil engineer, so I'm not going to speculate on that.
When was it determined, if you can tell me, when was it determined that you would need to go up at all?
Based on the fact that the site...
When was it determined?
At the very beginning.
At the very beginning? So was that before you went to the pre-screen?
Yes.
How, how high did, before the pre-screen, how high did you anticipate going up?
I believe in the pre-screen, we had, we had pretty much this layout.
Yeah, because we, yeah, we...
That was the site plan that was shown, shown at the pre-screen, so we pretty much had developed that layout initially. It seemed to be the best, you know, use, the best design for the site.
I, I might be wrong about this, but I went back and watched the April 22, 2013 meeting, and I got the staff report from the April 22, 2013 meeting, and nowhere do I see anything about a 23-foot-high wall. In fact, the mayor and two of the council members asked about sightlines and about a sightline study. And there were, Mr. Rovner indicated that the buildings were going to be 24 feet tall, but mentioned nothing about this, the buildings were going to start 23 feet in the air, in the, in, you know, up. The council members at the time of the pre-screen were very concerned and made a lot of, asked a lot of questions about the quality of life of the citizens, of the residents that currently live there. The mayor even went so far as to talk about how you might be able to raise the, the wall of one of the local neighbors immediately south, a few feet, and that would take care of the, the line of sight. Well, that's because he was imagining that your 24-foot building would start at ground level, he talked about it does sort of go up, and so you're going to add a few feet. But there was nothing in the, in the public hearing, there was nothing in the staff report about moving 23 feet up. And I'm a little concerned that you knew about this, didn't present it, and that the, that the city council granted the pre-screen on the basis of this knowledge or this belief that it was based on something that was not 18 to 23 feet high. And I recall the very specific question was asked of Ms. Freeman, of whether or not a line of sight study would be done. She said that she thought it would have to be done. I asked the city planner if such was done, he doesn't believe one was done. Was there a line of sight study done?
There were cross-sections that are part of the submittal packet, the original submittal packet, that show various cross-sections along the project.
All right, well, she was, if, in the original packet, you mean in April 22 of 2013?
No, of the formal submittal to...
Okay. Was the line of sight study done to identify the line of sight between this particular project and the people in the immediate neighborhood?
Yeah, it has a, sort of a graphic...
The poll study?
No, not the poll study, no, we, we cut some sections across the site, that kind of showed a graphic of how the roadway and the elevation occurred.
All right, so is it, is it your position that the city council in, in April of 2013 was advised that this project was going to be built on, on an elevation rate, rise of 18 to 23 feet?
I, I don't know, it wasn't fully designed at that time.
All right, you just told me it was fully designed, and that you...
Though, we had done a lot of the civil work, we had to do a lot, a lot of the civil work got done before, but there was not the level of detail that we have into it now.
Okay. I don't have any further questions right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anybody else have questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a number of cards, and I think what I'd like to do is address a couple of issues. Oh, by the way, Mr. Rovner, I don't seem to have a card from you, and the clerk is asking me to ask you to fill out a...
Okay.
Okay? I'm going to go through a few cards that there's no indication as to whether or not they wish to speak or not, and I'm going to mark those. So H. Maniar is in opposition, but no indication, wish to speak or not?
Just one minute.
Well, no, no, I'll, I'll call you in a minute, I just need to know if you wish to speak.
Yes.
Okay. And Keith Kelly, do you wish to speak?
That was appended on what else I heard here this evening, so I'll put you at the...
I will put you at the, all right, okay, I'll put you on as a yes, I'll put you at the end. Okay. Judith, boy, I'm sorry, Judith C. Diede, D-I-E-D-E?
Yes.
Do you wish to speak?
No.
Okay, and are you in favor or opposition of the project?
Opposite, uh, definitely.
Okay. And Gottlieb, Diede or DeeDee, it says you're in opposition, do you wish to speak?
No.
Okay. Scott Safford?
No.
No, you do not wish to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. And then Eric Adams, do you wish to speak?
No.
Mr. Adams? We'll never know. Okay. Well, he's opposition. All right. So I'm now going to read the names of the persons who do not wish to speak and indicate their preference. Who's the gentleman over here who wanted to wait till the end? I apologize. Your name?
Keith Kelly.
Okay, good. All right. So just in case you don't make it to the end of the people who are going to speak, and just in case you've changed your mind and you do wish to speak, I'm going to read the persons who do not wish to speak and their positions. I have John Stillman, who is in opposition to the project, does not wish. Edward Huntley, I believe it's Huntley, is in opposition. Phyllis Huntley, does not wish to speak, Ms., Ms. Huntley, it doesn't say if you're in support or opposition.
Opposed.
Very good. Josh Lewis is in opposition, does not wish. David Wright is in opposition, does not wish. Larry Murray is in opposition, does not wish. Aaron Newman is in opposition, does not wish. Dave Newman is in opposition, does not wish. John Krieger is in opposition, does not wish to speak. Cecilia Jones is in opposition, does not wish. I'm sorry?
I will speak.
Brad Perry is in opposition, does not wish to speak. Janice Grace is in opposition, does not wish to speak. Beth Tucci, or Tucci, is in opposition, does not wish to speak. Orville Harris is in opposition, does not wish to speak. Linda, I'm sorry, Viveros is in opposition, does not wish to speak. Barbara Moller is in opposition, does not wish. Joanne Meisner is in opposition, does not wish. You know, I'm just going to say, for the record, do I have to say they don't wish to speak, or can I just say this list doesn't want to speak? There you go. All right, Bruce Meisner is in opposition. Lois Gil, Gilvair, G-U-L-V-F-A-R, I'm sorry, it doesn't say if you're in support or opposition. Lois?
Got to be in support.
I beg your pardon?
I said, she didn't, she asked me to...
Well, she's not here.
There's no hanging Chad, I can't decide. Pat Pinkston, really? Pat Pinkston here?
Yes.
He was my PE coach at Madison Junior High School some years ago.
Conflict of interest.
Is that right?
That's right.
Unbelievable. Is in opposition? What?
Grant High School.
Oh, that's it, at Grant, at Grant, yes. You're correct. I thought you were at my J.C., Junior, Junior High School. But anyway. Pat Pinkston, a darn-good PE teacher, does not wish to speak, is in opposition to the Sean Carles? Yeah, I'm sorry, it looks like Carlson perhaps, is in support of the project, does not wish to speak. Judy Papio is in support of the project, does not wish to speak. Stacy Edward Adrian is in opposition. Nelson Adrian is in opposition. Ronald Thomas is in opposition. Don LaRusso, LaRusso is in support. Craig Florio is in support.
No.
Oh, I, I terribly, sorry, I was, I was doing my best to make it your name right. Mr. Florio is in opposition. William Lomnick is in opposition. William Bender is in opposition. Dave Kesselback is in support. Deborah Lovelace is in opposition. Michael Genetti is in opposition. Greg Barham is in opposition. Justin H-U-I-S-H, Hewish, is in opposition. Lisa Borum, it says wishes to speak, so I'll put that over there. Is that correct, you wish to speak, Ms. Borum? Very good. Barbara Thunberg is in opposition. Ingrid Cassidy is in opposition. Barbara Maniar, or Bakula Maniar, I beg your pardon, is in opposition. Cyrilly Bakewell is in opposition. Then we have Gottlieb, Diet is in opposition, Scott Saff, Safford, who is in opposition, and H. Maniar, who are, is in opposition. You don't have to be here to put in a card. And if I could encourage you to retain your, your comments, thank you. I have two other cards here that may have been sort of pushed into the wrong pile. Eric Adams, do you wish to speak? All right, we already brought him, that's why, they weren't here, we don't know. Okay. I think we're in business now. Going to call the names of the persons who do wish to speak, start with Cecilia Jones. Cecilia Jones.
Hello, and thank you so much for listening to me. I have grown up in Simi Valley. I'm 43, and I've been a teacher since, for 19 years, and I've always enjoyed the hills that we have, and I feel like, living here, we've had a lot of projects come, and, and I don't think it's horrible to have projects, but I'm just, I'm in opposition because I live on Ditch Road, and we see a lot of wildlife in that area, and I don't know if you guys are aware, but there's actually a bird called the California Napcatcher that is endangered that we have been watching. A lot of my friends and I are bird watchers, we're major animal lovers, and it's just, I think like most of the people here, we just really love those hills, and I, I feel like with the Big Sky Project, also with the Lost Canyons Golf Club that went in, I just feel like it's shrinking, like all of our land is shrinking, and we don't have enough open space preserved. And I just, I've just really, it's really hard for me to watch, and so I felt like I couldn't really forgive myself, I, I didn't come up and at least just speak with you guys about this feeling, which I'm sure many of us also feel the same way, just the beauty and, and the natural habitats that we have, and just watching the coyotes come out at night, and it's just beautiful, and I'm really sorry, I'm just very nervous, because I don't do this a lot, I teach in front of little kids. So thank you so much for listening to me, but it's just really sad, because I feel like a lot of that is just going away, the more that we build and that we put in, it just doesn't really even feel like the same place anymore. I remember with, when Coles was a cornfield, and, and we as kids used to go through the cornfield and go buy our fruit there, and, and I know to some extent, yes, we do need population growth, we do need buildings, but I just feel like there's so many projects that have gone up recently, that we're just losing so much of our natural habitats, and it's just, for me, it's really hard to watch. But that's it, so, thank you.
By the way, I neglected to say that because of the number of cards that we have, we're going to limit the comments to three minutes. You will see a green light, a yellow light that tells you, you, your time is about 30 seconds away, and then the red light means, you know, wrap it up. And thank you for understanding. And then, I assume that some of you were here at the last meeting in February, and everybody was so wonderful at that meeting, very respectful, let everybody speak. I, I hope that we can do the same thing tonight, in, in just as, as fair-minded a way. Deborah Shaw?
She had a pregnancy, she had to go assist our niece, so...
Very good. If she returns, then she can speak, but Ms. Shaw is in opposition to the project. Mike Vinari, or Vinardi. And then after Mike is Shannon Beeler.
I have some additional comments and some things that Mr. Rovner said before I get in the heart of my presentation. He talked about dumping on the site. It's Don Jacobs, one of his former employees, had dumped on the site, I physically watched him. He's had his friends dump on the portion right up from Cole, and I called and complained about it, and that put a cease to that. So there hasn't been dumping in years up there, only by him and his, his constituents. I think also the line of sight that you brought in, if you get down, I'm on faxing court, if you look from our street level and look up, this project will be probably 40, 50 feet up, not, and the line of sight should be equal of what's going on there. So I have a, we all have a problem with that. And a situation that, you mentioned Mr. Pinkston, he's my next-door neighbor, and years ago, when I first moved out here, there was a moratorium not to build a hillside. Both his sons tried to buy that piece of property before Mr. Rovner did, they want to put two houses on it and build an avocado orchard. They were denied because of the earthquake fault. So why all of a sudden is this guy allowing, being allowed to put, you know, these many houses on an earthquake fault? So that's my question. Now I'm going to go into the nitty-gritty, which I'll pass out to you as the city council. I only made five copies. I didn't know there were so many people, you just want me to bring them up?
If you could give them to Mr. Gibson.
Basically, what I did is I ran a, a criterium on Mr. Rovner again this morning, and this is all from this morning. Number one, he's not licensed. Number two, King Builders Incorporated is not licensed anywhere in the state of California. As you well see, I have documentation from the contractor state license board. There is four companies, King, Kingdom Builders, that are licensed in the state of California. Two are general contractors, one's an acoustic, I think one's a plumber, and they're all in Northern California. This particular project, and they're all sole ownerships, so how can you allow somebody to go up to this particular point and not be licensed in the state of California? This project should be killed just because of that. Second of all, I guess the last thing that I really want to say, I'll let you look at this, but I highlighted everything in green and yellow. His license is expired, Grunko is expired, and as of this morning, he's not licensed by the state of California, contractor's license board. I talked to Lauren up there about two weeks ago. He has changed his license over 10 times in the last 15 years, that means something. So there's always trying, apparent to my eyes, trying to hide something. I see the yellow light come on. Here's my last comment. We have Lost Hills Golf Course. Why can't we put the project up there? You already have facilities in, you have electricity in, you have gas in, you have water in, you have everything you need, you have structures there. Make them a 7-Eleven, make them a grocery store in your backyard, it's all level ground. Why, why destroy our hills behind us when there's not any consideration of what he's trying to do there? Put it somewhere in the past. I see the red light, I'll wrap it up from there. So I appreciate, I hope you take a look at this, and you can verify it, it's not that important.
And after Ms. Beeler is Becky, it's either Savell or Javel, I think it's Savell.
I have to agree with the first speaker, I too grew up in Simi Valley. In fact, I still think of the Groves neighborhood as the new neighborhood, even though it's been there for... been there for a while. Oh, thank you. And I know, my younger sister works for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and she told me that when it comes to things like this, really, policy is the main focus, and that quality of life isn't necessarily, I don't know, valued, maybe. My mom's house is directly across from that property. I grew up in that house, and her house is a sanctuary, and it is a rest for the senses to go to her home still and see those beautiful hills. Those pictures do not do those hills justice, and if you drive up there, you will see that. I think beauty is an eye of the beholder. There's wildflowers growing like crazy on those hills right now, and it's beautiful. I have to say, it's an odd dynamic to listen to people, strangers essentially discuss an area in which you live in terms of what they see as an improvement or beneficial, especially when what is being proposed makes so little sense. This property is zoned as low density, and Mr. Rovner purchased this property in 2004 knowing this. His original plan to build his dream home there changed to building several single-family homes, and in 2007, he brought sewer lines up through the older, well-established neighborhood we live in below this property. It would appear that that was a very strategic move on his part, because as we know now, the plan has changed yet again to this current proposal to build a 51-unit luxury townhome complex. I'm asking the Planning Commission to please decline this recommendation for the density zone change that's required to, for this project to continue. If you choose to support this zone change, you will be opening a door to higher-density building in this gem of an area of Simi Valley. In the last meeting, in an attempt, I think, to reassure residents, City Planner Peros made the comment that in 50 years, Simi Valley will pretty much look like it does now. Well, we all know that isn't true, just as Simi Valley does not look today the way it did 50 years ago. Growth is expected, we all know that. Thoughtful planning regarding this growth is what we expect. And it makes me ask, is this proposal so perfect that the city of Simi Valley is willing to make a general plan amendment to change the density zone? This is not gently incorporating development into the hillsides, to quote Mr. Peros again. This is a leap from residential low zoning all the way up to residential moderate so as to accommodate what is essentially a high-density complex over an earthquake fault in our state that is just still recovering from the most devastating fires we have ever experienced. Those hillsides burn every year. It simply does not make sense to build this complex in this location. And I have to ask, why does this project continue to be considered? I just have to wonder what is really going on here.
Thank you, Ms. Beeler.
Thank you.
Becky Savell, and then Rick Shaw.
Gentlemen, thank you. This property was purchased by the owner in 2004 as low-density, supposedly to build a single-family home. By 2007, he had permission to run sewer trunk lines through five streets below. Clearly, he had bigger plans. The story had changed to several single-family homes. Over 50 residents connected, paying upwards of $10,000 each to connect. The city charges only $4,374 to connect to the sewer lines. A couple of years go by, and the story changes again to what we are now looking at. A luxury townhome, two-story, costing upwards of $500,000 with an HOA fee and a request to change the zoning to moderate density. Townhomes and two-story buildings are by definition, in the general plan, high-density. This is sidestepped by the number of units, and by using the word senior, the hillsides can be built in two. 55-plus is a marketing term in the real estate industry. It means that one person of the residence needs to be over 55. These units were not meant for retirees on a fixed income or elderly who are afraid of outliving their money while the cost of living and medical cares go up. Per the 2019 government census, the per capita income in Simi Valley is $39,000 per person. The median home price in Simi is $500,000. Where are these people going to come from to downsize? We have too many examples of if we build it, they will come in Simi Valley, and buildings lay empty, developments are put on hold or abandoned, and this could happen here, too. There is an earthquake fault that has been well documented since the early 1800s. Everyone who lives here knows about it. It's always been on the general plan. The real estate disclosure laws in California are very stringent. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And the liability to the city of Simi Valley is too great. Connecting a road and changing the street name in a city is no small matter. Where are the plans that outline exactly what happens for the people who will have to change their address, maps that will have to be updated, general plan, et cetera? In my limited knowledge, this is not as simple as flipping a switch. If it's a requirement that this road connect, then why is it not a requirement that the property remains zoned as low-density? This development is incongruent with the surrounding neighborhoods. The boxes have been checked off, and assumptions allowed to be made. But the reality is that it is not appropriate for this location, and may not even be appropriate for Simi Valley at this time. The owner has neglected the property, he has not secured it, and that's where the complaints are coming from. It's not unsightly, it's not a dumping ground, it's a beautiful piece of property, and this is insensitive to the surrounding neighborhoods. Obviously, I oppose this zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, excuse me, we have Rick Shaw, followed by Emily Walker.
275 signatures of seniors in our neighborhood that I'd like to pass in, Mr. Kehl, 275 people that live in this neighborhood. This is cancellation of my insurance, and I live in the neighborhood.
All right, Mr. Shaw, folks at home can't hear you, so you need to speak to the mic.
That's a cancellation of my insurance, from my insurance company, because I live in a fire zone. This, this, oh, thank you, Commissioner Hodge, for your wisdom in this, in this project. It's 275, almost all seniors, living in single-family homes in this neighborhood, signed petitions opposing this project. The state has a population project, problem. Large cities overflowing into smaller cities, and now the state is extorting small cities to build affordable housing or lose house fundings, or lose senior house fundings. This brings carpetbaggers. What are carpetbaggers? Greedy profiteers from outside the city to buy up land and goods, make a huge profit, and move on to the next city. Rovner bought this property, knowing the zoning. He made large profit off seniors and putting in sewers in the area. Rovner made back-room deals, wanting to change hillsides, closing streets, granting public property to private individuals, wants to open a Speedway between the two townhomes with no traffic stops between Tapo Canyon and Sequoia. This is built in an earthquake area. Rovner advised us on December 12th that he paid a geologist over $200,000 to make a report that he couldn't find any active faults. If this project was magically built last night because of the zoning ordinance, the developer would be breaking law today. Tonight, he's asking that you approve this project to help commit this crime. This is a very quiet, senior family neighborhood. The people have lived here a long time, many, over 40 years. We brought here, bought here because of the zoning. This project is not compatible. There is no market for high-priced, two-story seniors' developments. Ricle Canyon was approved and not built because there's no market. Parkside Villas, same type of project, for sale, two-story townhomes, a zoning change in 2012, they couldn't sell. Now, it's rent month-to-month. This project is not fit for our neighborhood. Please vote against this project. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have Emily Walker, to be followed by Mary Earl.
I have letters from several people authorizing me to speak in their behalf.
You can pull that down, there you go.
Emily Walker, president, North Hills Homeowners Association. There are many reasons why the proposed Walnut Hills Senior Village is not a good plan and not in the best interests of those living in the area and the city. The vast majority of residents of the area are strongly opposed to this proposed development. Some of the reasons are as follows. The proposed development is not compatible with the single-family homes that are now in the area. Residents of the area cherish their rural, semi-rural quality of life here, and the proposed development would destroy this special country atmosphere. The proposed development is not compatible with the low-density zoning of the surrounding area. Although the proposed zone change is for moderate density, which is too much, the proposed development is really high-density. A summary of some of the other objections is as follows. Increased traffic, earthquake fault, two-story units, 23-foot retaining wall, wildfire area, construction dust causing respiratory illness and valley fever, as well as damage to swimming pools, homes, et cetera, equipment noise, no sidewalk on north side of Walnut, residents must cross busy street, water buildup behind wall when it rains, not near any amenities such as stores, et cetera. Residents may not be able to obtain fire insurance through major companies. It will be a high-risk area, and fire insurance may be available only at high-risk rates. Major opposition to the proposed development was expressed at the following meetings. Developers' initial meeting a few years ago, developers' meeting December 2018, Neighborhood Council meeting, January 10, 2019, Planning Commission meeting, February 6, 2019. The complete list is included in my letter, which I have submitted. Although some letters in favor of the proposed development have been submitted, the majority of these letters are from people who do not live in the area. As they do not live in the area and are not affected by the project, their opinions should not count. There is some support from residents on Lemon Drive. They are in favor of the proposed development, because some will receive land and their street will be turned into a cul-de-sac. Also, the developer will be receiving land for his project. Some have said that if the proposed development is not built on this parcel, something worse could be built there. This is an excuse and is utter nonsense. It is hard to believe that anything could be worse than this proposed nightmare. According to the general plan into which much thought was put, this land was zoned for low-density. This is a beautiful area, and low-density is good for this area. Leave things as they are. There is no other land in Simi where this type, there is other land in Simi where this type of development can be built. The former Recreation and Park District site will be senior, low-income condominiums next to Coles, senior...
Ms. Walker, could you wrap it up, please?
Yes. In conclusion, residents of the neighborhood have moved here to experience a quality of life that is offered in Simi Valley. Their concerns need to be given priority over a proposed new development. We believe that the overwhelming majority of people living in this area oppose this type of development, and we have collected hundreds, actually, well over 300, signatures of residents who are opposed to this proposed development.
Ms. Walker, thank you very much.
You have the power to make things right for people in this area. We request that the city reject this plan and retain the property as low-density.
Mary Earl, followed by, looks like Vernon Gilvier. All right, Ms. Earl?
Good evening. This 51-unit, two-story project is not compatible with the single-family homes in the area. I oppose the required zone change from low-density to moderate-density. Moderate-density is inconsistent with the area's low-density zoning. I also oppose terminating Lemon Drive and making it a cul-de-sac. This will create more traffic on the residential streets to the south of the project. On January 23rd of this year, the Planning Commission granted Runcle Canyon a three-year extension to do a market analysis regarding senior housing, because the developer doesn't think there is a market for it. If the city of Simi is so desperate for senior housing, why doesn't it make Runcle Canyon build the 138 senior units that they promised, rather than shove this project down our throat? Since the city's housing element is current, there is no need for this project. There has been mass opposition to this project from the beginning. What happened to we, the people? What happened to the major, the majority rules? Please don't approve this zone change.
So Vernon Gilvier, followed by Judith Clement.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate this opportunity. As you said, my name is Vernon Gilvier, and I live as close to anyone to this project as there is. I live across the street, and I'll be looking up at that 20-foot ball like living in San Quentin. These are just a few of my thoughts. I wanted to speak as to say how disappointed I am with this entire process, and how little consideration has been given to the citizens who live in the surrounding area. This decision will affect the people who live around this proposed development, and will be affected until they die. These are our homes where we have spent most of our lives. I have lived there for 43 years, shorter than some. Here we, we're here for a reason, and stayed because we thought it would or could not change. We will lose a big part of what was good. A lot of the people who make this, who will make this decision have nothing to lose, and will move on with no consequences whatsoever. We will be left with a lot less than what we had. Does anyone know how many thousands of yards of dirt has to be moved to accommodate 51 homes on an existing hill? A lot of this dirt will end up in the air being breathed by local residents. The Planning Department is trading away our part of Simi for a free road. It is an understatement that this is a bad idea for everyone for blocks around. Please reconsider this decision. It will be a great loss of our natural surroundings. Our zoning change is there just to be bargained away to benefit a few or others for profit. Thanks for your indulgence.
Judith Clement, followed by Bill Olibes, followed by Bill. So Judith Clement?
Hello. I am not a resident of Simi Valley. I live in Santa Paula, and through the years, I have seen many, many positive changes. With growth of our expansion, with populations expanding, with people...
Ma'am, could I ask you to address the commission and not the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry. With people living longer, there is a need for beautiful senior developments. The developments that have been shown give open areas where people can mingle. They're, to me, high-density would be having a family of three, four, five, six people living. When you have a one-bedroom, most seniors, they're lucky if they have a spouse, so there's usually two... usually one or two people in these buildings, so it wouldn't be super-high-density. The swimming pools, the nice areas that have been designed, the archaeological, the geological studies that have been made, a lot of areas have not had this kind of studies made. There are areas in California where streets have collapsed, sinkholes have developed. The studies that are being done now are to prevent any of this kind of catastrophes happening. So I would say, things do not remain the same. Weather does not remain the same. Life is a constant change. I live in Santa Paula. I have friends and I have family living in Simi. Ultimately, it would be nice if I could live in Simi. I value how passionate people that live in Simi are about their homes and environment. I love where I live in Santa Paula, and I love coming to Simi and visiting my friends. And I thought the proposed project looked like an ideal situation for people that might want to downscale. Maybe their home is too big, the maintenance is too much, and downscale to a smaller, yet open community where they could mingle, where they could have barbecues, where they could go in a hot tub. I think it would be great for most people. And 55-plus is not ancient, let me tell you. It's right around the corner. And if we could live and have a nice, big, beautiful pool, a nice area, I think that would be swell. That's it.
Thank you. Bill Olives, followed by Joy Lomnick.
My name is Bill Oliver, and I'm a licensed real estate agent, and I live here in Simi Valley. I've had my license for 16 years. And I'm here basically to just state that we do have a shortage of market-rate senior housing in Simi Valley. And I am a certified senior specialist focusing in aging in place. And one of the parts of aging in place is being able to downsize from a two-story house down into something that's universally designed so that seniors can age in that place as they get older, can move through with wheelchairs, have lower counters and such. I've sold a number of homes recently to seniors that had large homes here, and they moved out of the area to go to places where it accommodated that. So there is a shortage here, and my only goal in being here is just to state there is a shortage of senior housing here that's universally designed. And there is a need for it, because we are losing seniors that are going to other areas from here because they don't have any options here. Thank you for letting me speak.
Joy Lomnick, followed by Sheila Kuntz.
Hi. I'm against the zone change and the complex. According to the state, there has been three studies of the Santa Rosa-Simi Fault Line. They were William -- they were done by William Lettis, Chris Hitchcock, and Jerome Treeman. Each said that this fault line could produce a maximum magnitude quake between 6.5 and 7.0. This fault has been active sometime in the last 1,200 to 8,000 years and may still be active. They are, according to the earthquake maps, not just one fault line, but two. During the 94 quake, there was much damage in this area with almost everyone experiencing damage from cracked walls, falling chimneys, and more severe structural damage. It has been suggested by the state that a 500-foot buffer on either side of the fault line be instigated. Also, according to the same report, there are secondary upperplate fault lines running way beyond the main line. There are also liquefaction areas on the hill due to soil composition. This is in the city's paperwork, I don't know what you call it. Quote, "The city of Simi Valley requires a standard structural setback zone of at least 50 feet. Wider zones may be necessary where faults are poorly located, complex, or otherwise weakly constrained." The city, according to 4.3.1.8, "Alternative mitigation measures, all faults with any amount of displacement located within the Alquis Priolo earthquake fault zone are considered a ground rupture hazard unless they can be demonstrated to be inactive. Where faults are determined to be active or where activity cannot be assessed, structural setbacks must be provided." The contractor's geologist said the ground has been disturbed due to agricultural activity, so there is no way to prove that the fault line is inactive. To build a two-story structure on top of a 23-foot retaining wall on or near a fault line is insanity. I am against the zone for this complex due for those reasons."
Thank you. Sheila Kuntz, followed by Joe Scavo.
Hi. I've lived in Simi Valley for over 60 years, and I've seen it grow. It's been very hard for me, but you can't stop progress. I have 33 people that I had sign, they oppose the zoning change for the construction of the 51 units. Don Jacobs, when he was doing the work on the property, putting in the sewers, he told me they were going to build five or seven houses, and I was, you know, a little bit sad, but, you know, somebody has some property, they want to build something on it. But to put on 51 build -- 51 units there is just a -- such a great amount of people that are just going to flood that area. And I wanted to also mention, well, what everybody has said, I back all the people that oppose. I don't want to repeat, but I also wanted to mention that they were building condos next to where my mom lives off of Lead Street in Simi Valley, and they ended up changing it to apartments after it was all okayed. And I was just hoping that they don't change it to whatever they want to change it to once they change the zoning. So thank you very much. I forgot a lot. Can I give you this? Thank you.
Thank you.
So Joe Scavo, followed by Renee Kieselbach. Can you pass that down?
Thank you very much for letting me speak. City maps show that this proposed project falls under the regulations of Hillside Performance Standards, at least three-quarters of it, everything above Walnut. Hillside Performance Standards state, "All hillsides in Simi Valley are zoned low-density residential for single-family detached homes." However, senior housing allows for some advantages, but there's three exceptions. One exception is building in a, quote, "geological hazard area as defined in the safety element of the general plan," end quote. Chapter 7 of the general plan titled "Community Health and Safety" states, quote, "The Simi-Santa Rosa Fault is the only known active fault in Simi Valley planning area. Therefore, is the only fault that poses seismic hazard related to surface ruptures." The state of California has designated the Simi-Santa Rosa Fault as an earthquake fault zone, thereby prohibiting structures on the fault -- on fault traces. This is per the Alquis Priolo Special Studies Act of 1972. Continuing, "Structures located on or near this fault zone have the greatest potential to experience future ground displacement," end quote. It's out of our general plan. The geological report submitted to the city does not disprove the existence of a fault. And it should be noted, the Alquis Priolo Act encompasses both active and potentially active faults. Any geologists in the crowd don't know what I'm talking about. It blows that 10,000 years out of the water. Whether active or potentially active, the Simi-Santa Rosa Fault runs through this property and poses the potential for ground service ruptures, per the state of California. This is the only hillside in Simi Valley located in a fault zone. Therefore, we should not change the zoning, and we should not put our seniors on this hillside. Simi Valley offers much safer places for seniors, such as locations much closer to shops and businesses. And I want to say that I believe the state of California will understand if we decide not to put the senior housing in a state-declared fault zone.
Renee Castleback, followed by Forrest Callahan.
Hello, everyone. I'm an occupational therapist. I work in home health with seniors, and I do see a great need for senior housing. However, I do have some concerns. I think the density is maybe too great for the area. We live right across the street from it, on Lemon Drive, and I am concerned about the density and the two stories. I see a lot of seniors who have two-story buildings, and then they can't get up to the second floor. My other concern is that they might have their -- rent it out, or they might have a teenager live with them, not just a caregiver. I think one story is much smarter and less density for the area if you did build, and the thought of that 20-foot wall does concern me. So they would be overlooking where we live, too. On the plus side, senior housing's needed. I just think there would have to be modifications, less density, one story instead of two-story. And also, when we bought 40 years ago, Lemon Drive was going to be a cul-de-sac, and it's in the plan. If you look at Sequoia, it's a huge road, two lanes in each direction. It was supposed to be connected. So we are for the road being connected, but I do have concerns about the project as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Forrest Callahan, Forrest Callahan, followed by Renee Frazier.
Hello there. I submitted something in writing, but I also would like to make a statement, I'd like to read a statement to you quickly here. I live about 100 feet away, less than 100 feet away, from the proposed senior-living project, and I'm in favor of its approval. My family moved here in 1981, and we live on Lemon Drive. I'm not receiving any land as a gift, I'm not sure who is. When we moved here, we were informed of the city plan to connect Walnut to Presidio, and we were told that Lemon Drive would eventually be completed. It is currently sitting there as a cul-de-sac, but it's only half-finished, and it has been sitting in this half-finished condition for nearly 40 years. Lemon Drive north of township is a residential street with homes and children on both sides of the street. There are five small children that live in the homes across the street from me. Approximately three homes down from the end of the street, Walnut Avenue cuts into Lemon Drive and brings a continuous flow of traffic through our residential neighborhood. We were told that this connection would be terminated once Walnut was connected to Presidio. Lemon Drive was never intended to carry the volume of traffic that it is currently burdened with. At the February meeting of the Planning Commission, it was stated that in order to approve a zone change, there should be a good reason. I would like to suggest what I think is a very good reason. Lemon Drive is not a thorough -- not a good thoroughfare, but Presidio is a custom, has been custom-designed to carry traffic from Walnut to Sequoia and south to Alamo. Whether or not this project is approved, I think this road connection is long overdue, and it should be completed. It's only about one-tenth of a mile to complete this road, and we've been waiting all these years. Along comes Kingdom Builders, who is prepared to invest in the surrounding area, bringing tax revenue to the city and to the schools and the community. And we are, they are prepared to complete this section of the city plan. I think this is a good reason to approve a zone change from low-density to modern-density. It appears to be an attractive project, and it's only 51 units on 12 acres of land. The developer appears to be working with the city to address the requirements. They added parking and solar, and for reasons stated in the report to the commission, they were unable to add the affordable housing component. I think the city should follow through with the plan that has been in place for many years. Zone changes are not that uncommon, and they occur as the needs of the community changes. If this development is not improved, it may be years before another opportunity like this arises. Thanks.
Thank you. Renee Frazier, followed by Gail Hartung.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Renee Frazier. I've been a Simi Valley resident for 59 years, and I grew up on Page Avenue, where my brother and sister-in-law currently live, in the house that they live in. And they were some of the people who had to cough up a big old, huge hunk of cash to tie into the city sewer system as a result of the purchase of the property and the extension of the sewer line up the street. We're all opposed, the entire family is opposed to this project, for one of the main reasons is because we fought very long and very hard to protect these hillsides, and to have to continuously fight to protect them is exhausting. It was a tough, it was a very tough thing to get through. It was way back in the '70s when all of this began, and now we find that there are all these kind of, you know, little ways around the hillside zoning requirements. I don't think that anything should be rezoned from the general plan. That's a promise that elected officials made to the citizens that live in this community. This is a, you know, this is where we live, this is what we can plan on having for the next 20 years, and then all of a sudden you have a, you know, a 50-foot tall window looking down into your backyard because somebody wants to make an enormous profit on their investment. Now, I understand that we live in a capitalist society, and it's private property, and people, you know, can make, are supposed to be able to make money off their investments despite the fact that, you know, I think that community is more important than that, to me. Living, quality of life, developing neighborhoods where you know people for long periods of time is of paramount importance, much more important than making enormous profits. Nevertheless, I don't think that 51 units up from what should have been, what, five or six units originally, is a reasonable request from a developer. And especially with all of the other concerns that the other people here have come up with, I urge you to not approve of this zoning change. The general plan is the good one. Thank you for it. It's very, it's wisely done, and I think that dense building in our hillsides is the wrong place for this, and we don't need expensive housing for seniors. We need subsidized Section 8 housing for seniors. We need rent control. We need places where seniors can actually afford to live.
Gail Hartung, followed by Pat Albert.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners. I'm here in support of this project. I will say that I did hear some of the concerns, and, you know, I do feel that some of them are valid. However, as I understand it, the cities in the state have been mandated to create additional housing because of the shortage, and I believe that there will be a lot of this type of infill housing that will be built. Secondly, I do feel that there is a need for this type of housing. There are a lot of us baby boomers who are in larger homes that are $500,000 and up that will need to be downsizing, and when we do that, it will create housing for our younger generation. It'll leave our homes open for them to purchase and live in. My mother downsized, and she lives in Paseo de las Flores, which is a senior townhome complex. It was such a blessing for her to be able to do that, selling my childhood home in Van Nuys and being able to move to Simi Valley here where I live, and for her to be Van Nuys and being able to move to Simi Valley here where I live, and for her to be closer to me. And let's see here. Did you just hear about the low-income rental housing for seniors? I understand that that probably is needed as well. However, there is already, I feel, quite a bit of that available. I don't believe that there's enough for sale housing for seniors. And I feel we have a great need for that. And yes, the open space is shrinking, unfortunately, because of this mandate that we are now under. I think that that is just a reality that we need to face, that yes, we are going to be losing some of our open space. I also don't feel that while this will bring a larger density to the existing area of single-family homes, I don't feel that it will bring a huge population. Like one of the other women stated, a number of these 51 units could only have one person living in them, at the most two. 27 of them of the 51 are one-story. The only thing that I could say, and this might add, and this might not be specific to this particular plan, however, I feel with the great numbers of baby boomers that 55 is really pretty young. And I realize maybe this is, I don't know if this is a national or a state or guideline as far as age, but my feeling is that the age that's considered senior really should be reevaluated. And I feel that 60 or 65 even would be more appropriate. It would allow...
Ms. Albert, if I could ask you to wrap it up.
Oh, okay. Anyway, those are my thoughts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pat Zerman followed by Erwin Rosenberg.
Hi, my name is Patty Albert, and I've lived in Simi since 1972. I bought my first home here. I've been here for 47 years, if my math is correct. I love Simi Valley. I'm an advocate for this project because I really feel that there is a need for us seniors, I hate that word, but 55-plus, okay? I really feel there's a need for communities to be developed that we can move to, enjoy each other, have all the amenities, and let a younger family take over my house with the yard work and the maintenance and the trees to trim and kind of enjoy life. I work for Parks and Recs. I teach fitness and yoga to the 50-plus group, so I know literally hundreds of people that are 50-plus that I've worked with. Most of them are active, active adults. And it's not like none of us have any money. We need some market value property to buy into. A lot of us wouldn't qualify for affordable housing. So where does that leave us? We either stay in our homes that we've had, and we can't sell them because I personally don't want to leave Simi. There's beautiful complexes, 55-plus, in Santa Clarita. And I went and I looked at them, and they're wonderful, but I don't want to leave Simi. But I really would like to see more market value, design communities, upscale pools, barbecues, community centers, places where we can gather and enjoy life and enjoy retirement. And I really feel compassionate for the people that live up in those hills because I've lived near Yosemite and Cochrane for 45 years. And I've seen them tear down the whole hill from Yosemite north of the freeway. They tore the whole hill down, and they put up McDonald's and a car wash and a gas station. I hated it. It was like, what are you doing, tearing down my hill for a car wash? But it made room for more development in Big Sky. I mean, we're going to develop, we're going to want our kids to live here, our grandkids to live here, so we need the room. So give us the opportunity to sell our big houses and let somebody else have them, and we go and live in a nice, quiet community. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am. May I ask you a question? Are you Pat Zerman?
Who I am. I'm Pat Albert. You said Gail, and then you said Pat Albert would follow her.
Ah, okay, very good.
Yeah, no, I'm Patty Albert.
I got my Pats mixed up.
Oh, too many Pats.
It says in opposition on this, and I thought maybe you wanted to change it.
Oh, no, I'm Patty.
Thank you very much.
And I'm in favor of it with compassion for the owners of the houses nearby.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Pat Zerman followed by Erwin Rosenberg.
Good evening, thank you. I am Pat Zerman. I do live on Michelle Court in Simi Valley, and I am opposed to this zone change. I have just a wimpy little eight signatures to add to the opposition from my neighbors that couldn't attend. I would just like to ask the commission to not be fooled by the word "senior" being used in this project. This is clearly an age-restricted project, not intended for seniors, but for empty nesters. The developer, Mr. Rovner, has put in writing, and I quote, "That this project was designed from the very beginning as a market rate with specific clientele in mind, current homeowners looking to downsize from their larger family homes but seeking high-quality spacious homes with neighbors of the same age and socioeconomic backgrounds." That is mumbo jumbo for empty nesters. 55 and over is mostly still two, one-to-two, working adults in the household and is not a retirement community. To my knowledge, there is no mandate by the federal government or the state government for upscale market housing, especially for empty nesters. 55 allows the, any one primary resident, the primary resident must be 55. And the age is then done by the HOA, which legally will most likely have to be 18 and over because 18 is an adult. And anything other than 18 could be age discrimination. It is clear that the community surrounding this parcel of land is posed to the zone change, with the exception of some of the homeowners on Lemon Drive. I did hear tonight that people are saying that it was been in the general plan for Lemon Drive to be completed. I feel like at the last meeting, I'm not sure, but I thought we were told that that was in fact not true, that there was no plan to actually turn Lemon Drive into a complete cul-de-sac. I do know that putting Walnut through to Presidio has been in the plan, and while I not like to see that happen, it would make me sad. I would understand that it maybe must happen at some time. Adding a barbecue, a hot tub, and solar, a few parking spaces do not change anything. The design of this project is not the issue. It is the zoning change. I hope we do not lose sight of this issue. Our voices here tonight have been very clear, very strong, and very consistent. I hope they are not falling on deaf ears. Our quality of life is at stake. Please don't sell us out for the sake because someone slapped the word "senior" on this project. There is nothing in this proposal that warrants a zoning change. Thank you for your time.
Erwin Rosenberg followed by Lisa Borum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm reminded, 11 years ago, I made a change in life. One, I left the private sector to go into the public sector. At 49-years-old, I became a police officer. I also decided that I wanted to live in a great community, and that was Simi Valley. I wanted to get out of Los Angeles. I moved here to the home that I live on across the street from this project so I could look up at the mountains, I could look up at the stars, and I could help raise a 12-year-old child and enjoy the golden years of my life, of which tomorrow I'll be 60, so I would qualify if we bumped the age up from 55 to 60. I want to say to you that I think the last speaker hit it right on the nose. We talked about government for the people, by the people, of the people. That's your job here tonight. And what you hear overwhelmingly from my neighbors, who I've never been to these meetings before this project came up, informed me. They feel passionate about this. Now, I understand investing in property. I've owned property. I've built on property. But that's not what we're talking about here. Talking about impacting an entire community so one person can make more profit than they intended. They originally wanted to run for city council. I don't know what happened there, but they didn't run for city council. Next thing, they want to build multiple projects to make a little bit more money, and then they see an opportunity, and they want to change a plan that is a promise to us, the community, so that they can make more money. And everybody overwhelmingly is speaking out against that. And I hope, as the last speaker said, you're hearing that as commissioners. You're hearing that as our government representatives to do the right thing. And I hear you ask great questions, and it just concerned me the last time that this got carried over. I don't understand why, because when it comes back, one of the biggest issues was, what about affordable housing for seniors? There's no affordable housing for seniors in this. Then he come back with that idea. Came back with hot tubs, okay? Hot tubs, not affordable housing. What does that say to you? What is this project about? You know, they say best-laid plans of mice and men go awry. This gentleman told you right up front that he tried to build a project from a home theater or from a movie theater to an apartment project. That was his big project. And his wife even said to him, "Why would you want to do that again?" Well, is that what we're talking about here? Kind of a similar project? Taking a project that was going to be one house, now we're going to build 51 houses? Does he really know what he's doing? He's never done this before. You don't let an eye surgeon work on your heart. So you certainly don't let a remodeler work on building a 51-unit project in your community that's a jewel of Southern California. This Simi Valley is a jewel in Southern California. Let's not let this be ruined, not let this community be ruined by that. So I ask you to keep that in mind, keep in mind the impacts on traffic that it'll have on our kids that play outside and how it will hurt them, how there will be a fire risk, how there will be an earthquake risk. You've heard all the facts. It's very clear. Even your own general plan stated that it's a risk. How can you ignore that fact? Don't let the facts or the statements be manipulated. There's concern about the stability, and I see the lights blinking, so I'll try to wrap it up. But you raised that concern, Mr. Chairman, about the stability and whether there ever was an issue initially about the design in terms of the wall. And then I hear about this setback in the large wall. What are we trying to retain? What are we trying to keep from slipping? What kind of hill slippage are we trying to prevent? Why is this all of a sudden part of this project? So I would ask you to remember what this originally was in 2004, how it has massively changed now to 2019, and the impact it has on the large numbers of people in that community. And I ask you, please, do the right thing and oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Borum, and before, Ms. Borum, you start, I need to ask, Mr. Kelly, have you made your decision?
Yes.
Are you speaking or not speaking?
I will speak.
Did you do this so you could speak last?
No.
Okay, very good. Ms. Borum?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm opposed to this project and the zoning change. I've lived in Simi for over 30 years, and I live in a home in Valerie Avenue just for the last two years. And interestingly enough, I got kind of confused as how I should be designated. I am an empty nester, my husband and I, but we aren't going to move again. So we moved here as empty nesters and as seniors, and we live in a senior community. That's what we are now, a senior community. While I'm a new resident, and I would like to speak for those who are, I would also like to speak for those who are longtime neighbors, as well as my husband and myself. So imagine 20 years ago, or just two years ago for us, buying a home you thought would be your forever home in a quiet neighborhood with a view of the hillside and open land. Now imagine you did your due diligence before you bought the house, went to the city office, looked at the city plan. The city had open space and low density. Good. Now imagine someone comes along and wants the city to change their plan and rezone the open space for 51 townhomes with a huge wall. I am not opposed to affordable senior housing in Simi Valley. We need it. I don't think this is affordable senior housing. But here is a small fact you might find interesting. In my small, two-block, quiet neighborhood alone, there are 40 houses that are owned by seniors, along with my husband and I. And now you're going to change the rules on them. The quiet neighborhood with hillside views is being taken away with this zoning change. My husband and I, I guess because we're empty nesters and still sort of young, do a lot of hiking and a lot of walking, and we walk this area. And I will agree that these pictures don't do it justice by any means. I don't look at the road when I'm walking. I look at the green hills, I look at the lupine, I look at the poppies, I see the animals. It's a beautiful place to live. And as a person who was looking for a home, a senior home, this isn't one, this is not, this project's not where I would live. I got rid of a two-story house. I got rid of a pool, I got rid of a lot of land. I moved into, and I didn't have trouble finding a home. And I moved into a quiet neighborhood full of seniors with a beautiful view. And I would urge you and respectfully ask you to please not change our zoning.
I'll try and keep this brief. I just wanted to say, I'm kind of conflicted about this whole issue. First of all, I think we desperately need more senior housing in Simi Valley. And I think the architect in this case has done an excellent job. I really like the overall design and the four-sided architectural features and whatnot. All in all, it's a great project. The trouble is, I don't see any compelling reason that would require this zoning change. I don't like to see the rules of the game change halfway through. And all these people that live in this area, including myself, you know, came in here with a set of rules that were established, and now we want to change everything pretty radically from low-density to medium-density. So for that reason, I'm opposed to the zoning change.
Have either Lois Gilfeer or Eric Adams returned? Okay, I guess we'll just never know what their position was. I have some additional cards. All of these are for people who do not wish to speak. So as before, I'm just going to identify their name and their position, and without repeating each time that they don't wish to speak. Jose Ramirez is in support. Jake Ramirez is in support. Lisa Ramirez is in support. Manu Valenzarina is in opposition. Nora Sextey is in opposition. Trong Nguyen is in opposition. And David Frazier is in opposition. I have no further cards. Is there anyone else in the chamber who wishes, who has not already spoken? Or, ma'am, yeah, please?
I just want to turn one in. What's the agenda item?
It's Agenda Item 10A1.
10 what?
So we have Jerry Esther, who's in opposition. These people don't wish to speak. Alexandra Esther, who is in opposition, and Rebecca Alberian, I believe. Is that correct? I believe it's Rebecca Alberian who is in support and does not wish to speak. Okay. Are there any other persons who wish to identify their position? Hasn't put in a card. I have to say, I have never seen that many cards. Okay. Very good. So here's what we're going to do. The next step is to ask city staff if they have any comments regarding statements that have been made during the public hearing. The applicant will have an opportunity to make additional comments. And then we will close the public hearing and keep the conversation amongst ourselves. Questions may be asked. Questions may be asked. Questions may be asked before the public hearing closes, after the public hearing closes. That'd be questions from the members of the commission. Just to let you know, the gentleman to my right, who I believe is going to make comments regarding, city staff's comments regarding things that were said during the public hearing, is a member of city staff. He'll explain his position to you. The persons who, says commissioner in front of them, those are the persons who are making the decisions tonight. We're going to take a little break. For those of you who wish to go home, this would be a great time to go home. And if you have video, a video provider that provides the city council meetings, it's Channel 10. I don't know what it is on some other ones. But this would be a good time to, we hope, of course, that you stay and have an opportunity to hear directly. And then after, but then after we ask questions, and there'll be some conversation between the commissioners alone, and then we'll vote. So thank you very much, and we'll take a, we'll take an eight-minute break. We're going to start the meeting. If you can take your seats, please. Okay, so we'll, we're going to reconvene the meeting in just a few seconds. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during the public hearing?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Chairman Hodge. I have some, and I don't know if Senior Planner Shaw could give some of mine out as well. We do, I do listen to all the speakers and make sure I'm taking copious notes here.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, excuse me. Deputy Director, City Planner, Estrada Spurros. Thank you. So when we take a project like this in, there's a process. And tonight's hearing is part of that process. When we amend the general plan or propose a zone change, or not when we amend, when an applicant requests to amend the general plan, or an applicant requests to change the zone, part of the process is to have a public hearing. And as Steph does, we do our best job to evaluate the project, have the applicant meet the ideals and standards that have been set forth by the community to make sure the design and other features are incorporated, and to ensure general overall compliance with the goals and policies, objectives laid out in the general plan. But the applicant, this comes up every, every time we do one of these, applicant does have the right to ask for a general plan amendment. I know some people think that the general plan or the zoning should never be changed, and that's really not the case at all. It's even stated in our general plan document. It's a, if you will, a living, breathing document that's intended on a case-by-case basis to be assessed for change and modification when necessary. So I just wanted to do that. But part of this process is having a public hearing and hearing all the sides from it, and taking in this information and helping to weigh and make a decision. I did hear a number of comments from the speakers, and I just want to catch the ones that I think were quite relevant, that I think needed answering. There was an earlier speaker that mentioned about the net catcher and some of the environmental impacts of this project, and the loss of habitat and the loss of open space. When we did this project, we performed a what we call mitigated negative declaration, which is in conformance with CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. And as such, we required a biology study. And we actually studied the net catcher habitat in this area. In this project, if it were to be approved, there are mitigation measures that would dictate any work on the property would have to occur on a time not to affect any nesting birds, specifically the net catcher, and any number of changes in habitat would be protected. There was a comment earlier about air quality and from dust control, and that's all regulated by our city rules. When any construction occurs and there is dirt moving, there is a number of city rules that govern that as well. So I want to make people, we are aware when construction, the impact it has on neighbors. So we do control ours and making sure, for example, breeding is not done in windy conditions when dirt could be blowing onto the neighbors. So I do want you to know, we do consider that when we look at a project for development. The issue with conforming with the rules or changing the rules came up a couple of times. This project is requesting to do a senior development. And some people say, well, you know, why this and why here, and why would staff support that? Well, it actually, this area of the city is intended for development. It's not open space. It is residential for some type of residential development. People did adequately identify the residential, very low category that the general plan lists that as currently. So it doesn't mean the site would have something on it under our current general plan. The applicant does have the right to request the amendment to allow for a senior project. Our rules typically, and I mention this frequently if you watch our meetings, we do preserve our open space here in Simi Valley. About 35% of the city's overall area is designated as open space. And we do, as best a job we do, steer any development away from those areas. And that comes up. So that is something that's being met with this project in the sense, this area is actually changing part of its property to a residential moderate density, but also preserving part of the site as open space. It's actually adding open space. And what's happening here is, we look at the entire 12-acre parcel, and the applicant is actually clustering the development on a portion of it. So that's why the buildings look like it's, you know, when we look at the overall density, it actually meets the density numbers of a medium or moderate project. But there's, the reason it looks dense is because half the project site is, no houses are on it. Everything's been clustered into one corner. So I know that people are maybe feeling it's a high-density project, but when we look at the entire 12-acre site, it doesn't mathematically compute that way. There was a couple of comments about the seismic faults. We're well aware of the seismic zone in this area. There have been geotechnical studies that have been done. We would not be putting a building on top of a fault line with this project if it were approved. And so this is something that is studied at this stage and also at later stages of the project by engineers and by people that are well versed in this topic. So any construction on the site, if it were to be approved, would have to comply with any number of standards and rules and requirements. And I think those were the main ones I wanted to address, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gibson if he has any other comments he want to follow up on.
Thank you. The, there was a comment about the applicant's state contractor's license, and during the, during the testimony, I did a quick check with the contractor state license board, and there is a construction company that's connected to Mr. Rovner's name. He could probably verify that during his rebuttal. And it is an active contracting license, although it's not a requirement to have a contractor license to submit an application. The second comment, some comments were made regarding the general plan pre-screening application from 2013. And generally, the, it's a conceptual design application, whereas the full extent of a retaining wall height or a final design has not been fully studied as part of the pre-screen. It's more of a conceptual stage. So the staff report would not have particularly addressed a wall height, this kind of a more detailed component, which doesn't always come out in a pre-screening staff report. And that's all I'd like to add.
And I guess the one last thing I noticed, the Presidio Walnut Street connection is in the general plan. It takes a development project like this one to make the streets get built in the city. The streets, the city's not generally in the street building program. They wait for development to occur, and development is what gets infrastructure built and completed. So just to confirm for the record, this street is contained in our general plan.
Okay. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments regarding statements made during the public hearing? Yes, no?
Yes, please.
Five minutes, please.
Yeah, it'll take less than that. Kingdom Builder LLC is an owner, just like an individual, and it doesn't need a license to actually build. Micrometer Construction does have a license. It was first licensed in 1992 and was incorporated in 2001 and has had one license since 2001, and it's never expired and continued. So I think he pulled it up, but I did want to verify that, verify that, because someone had said that I didn't have a license, and my license had changed, and that is completely incorrect.
Anything else?
That's it. I think Mr. Pirros answered all the other ones.
Very good. If there are no further, are there any questions of commission to the applicant? All right. Saying none, we will close the public portion, public testimony portion of the hearing. And as before, well, first of all, before we go any further, are there any questions by the commissioners of staff? Commissioner Rice? No. At this end?
I don't think so.
I'd like a clarification from Mr. Gibson. Mr. Gibson, there's a grid that identifies, in the staff report, that identifies the zoning of all of the contiguous properties in each direction. Is that accurate?
The grid is in the staff report, yes.
Okay, good. So, if you could refer to that, please?
Is there a page number?
Exhibit four.
Yeah, page four? Yes, in exhibit four, it was included. That was the original staff report from February.
Thank you.
That's not on page two, it's on page six. All right, so it says, it has the subject site, and then it says, "To the north, it's low-density residential open space. To the east, it's low-density residential. To the west, it's open space and low-density residential. Then it says, 'medium-density residential.' And then for south, it says, 'medium-density residential.'" I just wanted to confirm, for the property on the south, medium-density residential, but that's based on county standards. County standards for a medium-density residential is three and a half to five, and this particular property would have a zone modification changed to 10. Is that accurate?
The proposed zoning on this site is 5.1 to 10 units per acre. And the county zoning, let's see if I have that here. So again, which piece are you referring to?
It says, in the grid, Table 1, it says, "To the south, medium-density residential." And then over, this is county. It was identified in the, April 22, 2013, specifically as 3.5 to 5 units per acre. I doubt that it's changed.
Yes, and it's also pre-zoned for residential low-density as well. That's the city's future zoning designation, should it be annexed?
So, if the city annexed, it would be low-density?
Under the current pre-zoning designation.
Understood. If we can take a, put on the screen, a picture, if it's available. If it's not, we can do it from memory, but of the wall that's envisioned to be built? Okay.
Is this wall, this one appropriate?
Is that it?
Yeah.
Oh, that was it. There is one that, I believe, that was put up that showed the wall.
By the driveway.
Yeah, right, right. And it didn't have that, you know, it was sort of as it got built, not as it was, you know, eventually covered over by foliage.
Was that in the applicant's presentation? Was it in the applicant's presentation?
It may have been. But is this the same PowerPoint? All right. Well, maybe you can answer these questions. I recall that there was photographs of the wall before, showing it as it was built, or as it is envisioned to be built, without it having the artist's rendering with all the foliage covering it. Do you recall that? Well, here's my question, Mr. Gibson. I'm trying to understand how steep it is, and how far back from the street it is. There is no sidewalk envisioned on the northern side, is there? Or is there?
There is a sidewalk, and in fact, your original rendering is from the February meeting. Page two is a more opened-up area.
So, is there an enriched parkway between the sidewalk and the curb line?
Yes, there is. There's a small enriched parkway.
And how many feet? Approximately?
It's about three feet average. It's a very small enriched parkway.
Okay, so three feet, and then the sidewalk is how wide?
The sidewalk and landscape planter area is a total of 10 feet, so it's usually like five and five.
When you say planner, are you talking about the parkway?
It's the parkway between the sidewalk and the curb.
All right, so we're 10 feet back before we get to the property line of this as built. And there's going to be, I saw that there were some trees that were included in the rendering, so I assume that there's some flat space for the trees to be built, and then we start the wall. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, that wall, it goes between 18 and 23 feet up. How many feet deep, we'll use the 23-foot spot, how, what's the, is it five feet to one foot back? Is it six feet to one foot back? Is it 45-degree angle, so it's one to one? What's the anticipated angle? From the rendering, the rendering that was provided by the applicant, it looked fairly steep.
Seven to one.
Seven to one? Okay. So, for every seven feet it goes up, it goes one foot back? So...
I'm sorry, it's one to 1.7.
One to 1.7?
That's at the end.
All right, well, we'll figure this out, but, because what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to envision, is this going to look like a wall? Is it going to look ultimately like a slope? You know, what's the appearance? Does this go back 23 feet at the place where it goes up, 23 feet?
No, it's mostly vertical. It is angled, it is stepped back, but it's a very vertical appearance, in my opinion, but it is slightly angled.
And as I recall, when we saw the presentation in February, the applicant wasn't aware of the artistic license that was taken by the person who did the artistic rendering, and estimated that the prop, that the wall would be covered within 10 to 15 years. Has staff evaluated how long it will take for that wall to become effectively covered with either the ground cover, the wall cover, whatever it is that's going to do that?
No, I've not specifically estimated the growth of the plant selected. That's usually covered during the final landscape plan review stage.
Okay. Are there any other questions from staff? All right, seeing none, we will limit the conversation to the members of the commission as we did before. I'd like to identify some of the issues, talk about them a little bit, instead of just have everybody announce where they are, so that we have an opportunity to possibly persuade other persons to address issues, so we can talk about them collectively. One of the ones that I'd like to start with is, if this project is, ultimately receives at least three votes, I would like to see it deed restricted, so that it can have no more than the number of units on the property that has been asked for by the applicant, so that we don't run into a situation where, for whatever reason, it isn't built by this applicant, this applicant somehow feels compelled to sell the property, somebody else comes along with an alternative vision, and wants to build at a density that's greater than seven.
I agree, Chairperson.
Anybody oppose that?
No, I agree as well.
Totally agree.
Okay, very good. So, we dealt with that.
Just want to clarify that we would probably condition the zone to reflect that. I'm not too sure that we want to necessarily do a grant deed restriction. It can be zoned in a specific way to have that requirement.
Okay, and would that provide notice to...
Subsequent buyers, yes. If it's recorded with the county, yes.
All right, very good. So long as there's a process for doing that, defer to the city attorney on that process. I'd like to address the issue of, well, I need to take this off of my plate for just a minute, and ask the other commissioners, you know, what are some of the issues, some of the things that you see that you might be, you know, grandly in favor of, very supportive of, not so supportive of, and if we can sort of take these in bits and pieces? Anybody want to start?
Sure, the traffic issue. I personally believe that the traffic report, the traffic report that's in here is one of the more thorough ones we've ever received, by actually having people go out and count cars. Oftentimes, it's just, you know, a statistical formula, and they actually went out and counted cars. I'm very impressed by that, so, I think that was, I...
And the result is nearly nothing.
The result, yeah, the result was not even what I thought it would be. It was much less than what I thought it would be.
I have some concerns about building in this particular area to this density, especially it being with seniors, because although there are going to be a lot of 55 and older to, say, some other number north of 55, who will be a very spry bunch, there will eventually be some folks who aren't so spry. And I'm concerned about, you know, one driveway for 40-something units to all want to get out of, you know, semi at the same time. I do think that the issue about whether or not somebody is going to get insurance is really kind of a separate issue and a non-issue to my mind, because if people can't get fire insurance, then they can't get loans, and if they can't get loans, they can't buy the properties, they can't buy the properties, they're going to sit there vacant. So, I think that the market will take care of that. You know, if that, in fact, is a reality, I don't know if, you know, the reason the gentleman, the one gentleman who lost his insurance is because he's with an insurance company that, you know, has changed their design, their strategies, but not the others. So, we really don't have enough information on that, as far as I was concerned. Anybody else have any comments on that?
I would say that I have seen a noticeable uptick in that happening in our city of various insurance companies dropping people because of the high fire risk. And at the Planning Commissioners Academy, we did hear that happening in quite a few cities. So, I think that is something we should take under advisement, but we don't have any concrete data on that.
One of the big, there's, I have a couple of different, very large issues, but I want to address one of the large issues that I brought up earlier, and Mr. Gibson's comment with respect to it. I watched the April 22, it's almost six years ago that this thing came, before the city council for a general plan pre-screen. And there were three members of that council that were terribly concerned about how this project would affect the existing community. And they expressed themselves quite plainly, and with, you know, obvious concern that this project not have a negative effect upon the people who were there. And they, and the questions were asked regarding the height, and how far back, and what that would mean, and whether or not people could look down into somebody else's backyards, et cetera. And it was a big issue. It wasn't a small issue. It was a big issue. And that, at that time, the staff report did not mention, and the applicant did not mention, although now the applicant tells us he knew, that this thing was going to be built on a berm, or built on a manufactured pad, that would take the property up from the street level by 18 to 23 feet. And I don't think that that's something that, you know, I almost think this is a different project. And I, you know, I wonder if the, you know, you would look at it and say that this is the same project that was brought before the city council. Now, whatever we decide here is just a recommendation, and I think that's quite obvious. I think we covered that at the last meeting. And the new council will have a chance to decide whether or not that berm, that buildup, makes it a separate project, and makes it, in fact, incompatible. I can't, I cannot see how, and I'm subject to persuasion on this, I can't see how, when you have to build a berm, or a manufactured pad, 23 feet deep, so that you can accommodate this density, how does that show that this property is susceptible to this kind of use? How, if you take a look at zoning concepts, and one of the primary considerations is, when they talk, when they have the pre-screen, is whether or not the proposed project is compatible with the existing neighborhood, and is otherwise a subject to be made compatible as a result of the way it's built. So, in this one, this is not a project that's across the street, to say nothing about the little sub-parcels, and I'll talk about that in a minute. You've got to build a pad 23 feet high, and say that, oh yeah, this is very consistent with, there isn't another project, I believe, in this city that is supported by an 18 to 23-foot, or any, even 10-feet wall of this type. I've had conversations with other persons in the city that know the city pretty darn well, and nobody is aware of a similar project, a similar design like this. I mean, this is right out of, it's never happened before. And to say that this project is compatible with the neighborhood, only because we've gone through these Herculean efforts to remove soil from one part, so have a cut, and fill the other portion on the street, so that you have this Gibraltar, that's perhaps a little hyperbole, but it would be the Gibraltar of Simi Valley, you know, and to sit back and say, oh yeah, this land is really good for this density. Well, how do we know that? Well, because it fits there, you know, you can build a project. No, you can't. You can't do that unless you start doing some things that most folks would look at and say, oh my goodness, how'd they ever get that approved? Maybe that was back when it was county.
That would remind me of the Westerly project right now on Madera in Los Angeles. It's probably the closest thing we have to it, and people were, I mean, we're getting the same sort of outcry with that project. The 15-foot, it's 15 feet raised from Los Angeles Avenue on Madera.
Oh, yes, well, that's on the valley floor. It's because, I think that they wanted to do that because of the water table.
Well, I wanted to support what you were saying.
And I appreciate that very much, and I think that you're quite right. And I was just sort of bringing up that, you know, that's a whole, it's a different can of worms, and it's probably the right place to do that, and I agree with you. I've heard a lot of people that says, geez, you approve that? I mean, what's the story with the increase in the height? And it was because of the water table. And, you know, there's a lot of pushback on that, and that's in the flat bottom of the city. It's like the lowest level of the entire city. I take a look at the compatibility issue, and the general plan, and the considerations about, you want to have less density as you go up from the valley floor, and so, here we go back, and we go back, and then the place that's furthest from the valley floor on this part of the city is moderate density, as opposed to, you know, further down the slope, it's low-density. I'm very concerned about this little piece of land across the street on the south side, sort of being, you know, foisting its way into the folks over by Lemon, and I'm wondering why, if we were actually zoning this as blank property, and Presidio was in, no one would say, oh yeah, and let's carve out a little spot over here for this, these extra units on the south side. You would sit back and say, no, let's keep that low-density, to be consistent with the other properties that are over there, without consideration of the other property. So, this would be sticking in some zoning for this parcel on the south side, simply because he owns it, and wants to do something with it that's consistent with his property. You know, some of the things that would have made this project a little more appealing to me is if that parcel was low-density, and that the other side was, it wasn't any 23 feet in the sky. And I take a look at this, and I just can't get there, in terms of whether or not, as identified in the considerations for the pre-screen, it's compatible with the neighboring community. You've got this grading problem, you've got the density issue. You know, somebody came up, and Mr. Stratus quite accurately said that the general plan is a living, breathing document. And everything that I've seen for the years that I've been on the commission, and it's not forever, it's six-plus years, but still, we've looked at a lot of projects recently, and we've looked at a lot of projects where there's zoning considerations. The zoning changes that we've approved in the past are evolutionary. This is not an evolutionary change. We've looked at projects where there's an apartment here, and somebody, and there's single-family homes here, and somebody wants to take some of these single-family homes and make it moderate density. So, you have high-density, moderate-density, low-density. It's evolutionary as projects go on. You take a look at Patricia Street, it used to be all single-family homes, and sort of begins to evolve, it develops into an overlay area, and it evolves into something that's higher density. This is a sea change. This is not evolution. This is somebody coming along and saying, we want to stick this in there, and even though it doesn't, isn't compatible with the neighborhood, and, you know, if, okay, I'm one opinion, and I think we heard the opinions of many others, and, you know, the signatures from hundreds of others, and I think that we, you know, we need to listen, and it should be persuasive as to whether or not this is compatible. And this isn't a bunch of, you know, the whole concept of zoning, and I've said this the last time we had a meeting, to me, the whole concept of the general plan is to provide some certainty, is to provide at least some idea that, okay, this is gonna be this, unless it really should change. And unless it should really change, it should be because of the neighborhood evolving into something different. Our general plan talks about keeping this kind of density on the valley floor. We had, at the meeting that we had in February, we had another agenda item where we talked specifically about how there are other places within the city... where we talked specifically about how there are other places within the city that would meet this kind of zoning requirements, and that's where that, this project should be built, not in a single-family, low residential neighborhood. I like the idea of the street getting built, but you know what? This project is going to be developed at some point, and that road will be changed. And I, and I thought it was persuasive. The gentleman, it was Mr. Fraser, I believe, he was talking about, or maybe it was Mr. Callahan. It was Mr. Callahan, he was talking about, I actually listened to you guys when we write this stuff down. I was talking, listening to Mr. Callahan, and he said that when he moved in, he was told that Lemon would become a cul-de-sac. He wanted to rely on that. The other neighbors wanted to rely on this property remaining low density. So I can understand Mr. Callahan's concern. It's like, hey, this was supposed to change, and I'm looking for it to change. And all these other residents are saying, I was looking for this parcel to be somebody's single-family home, or maybe there's going to be three or four units being built there. And no, now we're zoning it to, you know, medium density. I mean, I just can't get to, I just can't get to that this property is consistent or compatible with the neighboring community, so. And boy, oh boy, do I wish that you had told the City Council that this thing had an 18 to 23-foot manufactured pad. Anybody else?
I've got a couple ideas, thoughts on the whole matter. The City Council, or the applicant came to the City Council in a big picture way and saying, we'd like to have a zoning change, not specific, real general. And they said yes. And so then it goes to the city staff to see if that could be done. And the city staff, I think, has worked really hard with the applicant to make sure that all the areas that are questionable are addressed and check off the boxes, whether it's the earthquake, whether it's the fire zone, whether it's the, making sure that future purchases would be still under the HOA of whatever. And so for us, I think our job, and I think the staff has made the project acceptable to what this City Council has asked them to do. Now for us, our job then is to go through and look at those, you know, ideas and make sure that that's something we want. And then also listen to the neighborhood council, listen to the open forums and say, okay, this is what the neighbors want, and take that into consideration. So, you know, and the bottom line is, what we decide tonight isn't the final decision, because it's going to go back to the City Council for them to say, well, you know, the Planning Commission said it's a good project, we're not going to do it though. And that's what, that's up for them to decide, because it's a zoning change to the general plan. So, you know, I commend the staff to working with the applicant in terms of making sure that the project is what potentially the City Council would want. You know, if you go to today's State of the City, the number one goal for the City Council that they met a month ago is housing, affordable housing and for senior housing. That's their number one goal. So, again, that's not to say that, you know, this is the right place for it, but that's the, I think, in my opinion, that's the process of what we're supposed to be doing. The City Council a couple of years back said, you know, let's go ahead and float the balloon up. The staff has taken the time to make sure that we have a proper project that can be acceptable to potentially what the City Council will want. Our job now is to say, okay, we're going to come up with a decision whether we like it or not, and then it's going to go back to the City Council to say, well, you know, we're going to take into consideration what the Planning Commission said, but it's up to them to make that change.
Anybody else? Mr. Casares?
I just want to say you're absolutely correct, and your job is to provide recommendations.
And that's not to say that I'm in favor or against it at this point. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm trying to understand the big picture concept on the new guy on the block and making sure we're on the same page.
And Chairman Hodge, I had one comment. I meant to say this at the beginning of the meeting. Commissioner Tolson recently joined the Planning Commission. He was not here at the February 6 meeting, but he has since read the staff report from that meeting, read the minutes and watched the video from that hearing.
Twice.
Twice, in order to be here tonight, to participate in tonight's hearing. So just for the record, for the audience members that may have thought he might have missed something, he did watch what happened previously.
Additional thoughts?
Well, I have, I, if we're going to go back to the wall here just for a minute. You know, I mean, this is pretty clear, I've seen projects like this. Not in Simi, it's true, but using the same type of wall material that he's talking about, I've seen it with the vines on it and the wall virtually disappears. Of course, they have to put the right plants on it and they have to take care of it, but that's covered by the, that's it right there. That's pretty much what it looks like, and that's, that's development, and it's up fairly close to the edge.
But it's a matter of whether we want it in this location.
Correct.
Yeah, and this, this has a difference, this isn't in our city, and this has a much, a much softer slope. Okay? By the way, my perception is that we're evaluating this de novo. We are not, we should not be persuaded by the fact that, in my mind, that the City Council previously approved a pre-screen. The pre-screen is just a, okay, there's enough here for us to go forward. I also think that we should evaluate whether or not the applicant provided enough information. Because if you try to say, well, the City Council looked at it and said, yeah, you got enough here, you gotta, you gotta ask yourself, what did they say? And if they didn't provide enough basic information, foundational substantial information for them, for the City Council to make that decision, my perception is, based upon watching that hearing, that there were three council members who were very concerned about the lines of sight to the neighbors to the opposite side of Presidio, I'm sorry, of Walnut. Having not had that very salient information, and I think that the size of the wall is very significant. Not some general, well, sorry, we didn't include that, I guess we could have, uh-uh. I think that is a dramatic difference. It is not a distinction without a difference, it is a dramatic difference. That was, that's just my perception.
On that, since you brought up the height issue, if they would, if this would be low density, they'd be allowed to build, what is it, 11, 11 homes, 12, 12 homes, two-story homes?
It's in a 1.13 acre minimum, so about 11, 10 or 11.
So there-ish, somewhere in there. Yeah, two-story homes, and the height would be about the same. I mean, it might be farther away from the slope, that's true, but then again.
But why would they, why would they build a berm? Why, who would be building the berm?
Yeah, but, I mean, it's still, I mean, it's, it would, you know, and it's line of sight, I actually think it might actually block more than having that berm there.
Okay, okay, I get it, I get it. Anybody else? Commissioner Castleberry?
Nothing, I mean, my biggest concern, number one, was this, we discussed it last time, to approve a zoning change, there needs to be a really good reason for us to approve one. And I think affordable housing was the reason we continued this in the first place. I don't see that in here, I am happy to see that solar was addressed, which was a concern I brought up. I mean, I could go over my whole comments of it, but there's nothing specific that I think that we can address at this point.
I would like to address real quick the parcel on the south side of the street. I mean, I, who would ever zone that parcel, medium density, if this was, if this was blank space? Oh yeah, you know?
Well, a couple blocks away, you know, and it's not that far away, there's high density. There's an apartment complex, it's just two blocks away.
And was that built when it was county?
No, and that's two and a half, three, maybe?
Wait, wait, no, the public hearing, the public hearing is closed, public hearing is closed.
Relatively close, from the edge of the property, but, you know.
But was that, built when it was county or?
1980.
I don't know the answer.
1980, 1980.
1980?
But another thing that I think is important to consider too. So this property, okay, hasn't been developed on, or at least it has, if there ever was anything on it, it's long gone. The development across the street was built in 1963, right? Okay, there's also a home right there that was built in 1926. I wonder what those people felt when, right next to them, they built this giant, you know, section of all these homes, and the density increases like that, and all around them, they're all of a sudden filled up. I, my, my point for saying this is, is that, you know, here's the thing. I mean, nobody, nobody wants to see the density change, nobody, everybody wants the hillside, everybody wants it to be open space or as low density as possible, I understand that. Just like the 1926 house probably loved the fact that they had nice big open fields. And the people in 1963 who had these beautiful homes that they've had, they've had 56 years of that view, and that's been a treasure. They've, like the lady pointed out, you know, I'd love going to my mom's house and seeing that view and everything else, but is it right for us to take away somebody's property rights in order for her to, to keep this memory that she had from when she was a child? I don't know that that's right.
No, but, but it was zoned for that. It's zoned for low density. Somebody could come along and build low density, and the people who've lived there since 1926 would have nothing to say. I would think that this applicant, he told us at the last meeting that he bought this property with the idea of building his single-family dream home.
Right.
I'm thinking he probably bought it because it was idyllic, it was quiet, it was beautiful, it was all these things that other people want to protect. And then when he turned, it turned out that he didn't want to build it for himself, then some, you know, alternate ideas were spawned with the help of a former staff member.
You know more than I do.
Well, that's what he said, he said that he met with Mr. Jewery.
Okay.
Okay. You know, I, I think that we've probably gone around the circles hard enough here. My position is that this is not compatible with the neighboring areas. Please, please don't, please don't. I find specifically that, that the moderate, the moderate designation, the moderate density designation is supposed to be intended for, you know, on our design elements, it's Simi Valley Municipal Code 9-52.050-F and some others, specific to the Tenor Track Map. That's, the moderate density is supposed to be, is intended to be used mainly on the central portion of the valley floor with limited use in outlined canyon areas. This isn't just a slightly outlined canyon area, this is the end of the line. This is the end of the line on that part of the city. I find that the property is not really conducive to this kind of density as exhibited by the nature of the need to build a dramatically incompatible berm or wall, a manufactured pad between 18 and 23 feet. That, you add that along with the 24-foot height of the buildings, now you're looking at anywhere in the neighborhood of 42 feet to 47 feet. I find that the overall density and intensity of the land uses, but I said, oh, this is also different. There's a finding at Simi Valley Municipal Code Section 9-32.050-A4 that overall density or intensity of usage is supposed to be, to generally decrease as the slope increases. That has absolutely not happened here, this is the, in this area, the steepest part of the slope of this area, and we have an increase in density as opposed to a decrease in density. And so I find that the, the project is incompatible with that requirement. I find that the view, it's a design standard, Simi Valley Municipal Code 9-32-140, that, that this view, that the view shed is not maintained by spacing the buildings so that the view on the northerly hillsides are maintained, and that's because of, not because of the positioning of the buildings, but because of the size of the manufactured pad. So normally, I, chair goes last, but I, you know, will use my, the evil discretion to go first, and I can't support this. Commissioner Castleberry?
All right. I've given this project a lot of careful thought and consideration over the past couple of months, and I've tried really hard to weigh the concerns about this immediate neighborhood as well as the community as a whole. Given the housing crisis, there is a housing crisis, we do need the housing. It has me really conflicted, like a lot of the people I've heard speak here today. I see some positives for this project, I do want to highlight a couple. It is a beautiful project, it is visually appealing, it does finish Presidio and save the taxpayers some money, and it removes a vacant lot, which can attract crime, noise and vagrancy. And I was happy to see the applicant respond to my request regarding solar. However, I'm very disappointed by the lack of affordable housing. And while I normally can understand the need for a zoning change due to the natural progression of a city, I think a zoning change in a hillside performance standard area must really demonstrate it's fulfilling an exceptional need within our city. Given that our regional housing needs allocation, given our regional housing needs allocation progress above moderate income housing such as this marker rate project, does not fit an exceptional need. However, an affordable project would have. I'm also not convinced that we should be upzoning in a wildland urban interface zone, given our increasing risk of wildfires, given the Woolsey fire just last year. The threat of climate change has exceptional threat for this area. And there is a history of fire in this area. I remember as a child growing up, this area being on fire not too long ago. So with that, I cannot support this project.
Well, anybody wants to jump in? Commissioner Tol?
I like the project, I just don't think it's the right place for, you know, the neighbors are quite opposed, although, you know, census in 1970 was 61,000. And that's, you know, eight or so years after they purchased. Then there's property developed along Lemon in 1980, the Walnut, 1980. So they were probably opposing that too. And this property is a hillside, and because it hasn't been developed, in their mind, it's, it's always been hillside and it's always going to be. But it's going to be something else, but I just don't think this is the project.
Commissioner Mann?
Change is inevitable. Something will be built on this piece of land at some point in time. I view our job similar to what my fellow commissioners said. Our job is to figure out, is this the best project going forward? I think it's a good project, like Commissioner Castleberry said. I love senior housing, they're great floor plans. We haven't even discussed anything on the architecture, the floor plan, the design. All that is flawless, I made my, the same comments at the prior meeting. My comment also on the prior meeting was, I haven't seen a community good or in need to do a zoning change for one person. All of you bought your homes with this hillside being there. Nobody ever promised it will stay there, but our job as commissioners is to put the best project possible on that hillside. I'm just, I don't believe that the project that's before us is the best project that we can hope for. I think there's a lot of issues with it. I still have my issue with the traffic and the human frogger, people going from Lot 2 to the Lot 1. They're not going to drive, they're going to want to walk across the road. The wall, I mean, eventually the wall will quote-unquote disappear once the landscaping comes into play, but for the next 10 years or so, somebody's going to have to look at that stone brick monolith of a wall until it's covered up with trees or vines or whatnot. I agree with Commissioner, sorry, Chairman Hodge. The, we're supposed to be less dense as we go up into the hillside. We're supposed to be trying to retain the hillside view, not put this, this large structure there. 12 houses up on that piece of property zoning for low would have less of an impact, whether the two stories or a single stories, than looking at 51 units all clustered together in one area. I think it's a good project, I don't think it's a great project. And because of the issues that I had before that haven't been alleviated and the issues that are still there, I just cannot support the project.
Commissioner Rice?
All right. I tell you what, in eight years, I don't think there's been one project, this is maybe one of two projects that I've ever seen where I kept flip-flopping, you know, in my head. And I'd be walking the dog and thinking about this project, and I see a vacant lot and I think of this project. It just drove me crazy. However, and definitely on the losing side, it looks like, but that's okay. I agree with Commissioner Castleberry that when this went to the city pre-screening, they should have talked to them about affordable units. I wish this project had, even if it was just one, just one, would have, would have meant a lot. I really think that that might have been the tipping point for maybe one of you, I don't know. But anyway, this project is beautiful. I mean, there's four-sided architecture on all of them, the buildings look nice, the floor plans are nice. I agree with the two, the woman who mentioned the two-story, that is kind of a problem with, and I wish we had more one-story buildings, but. and I wish we had more one-story buildings, but also, too, you know, I thought about the type of people that would live in this. These are people that are 55-plus, and those are the people who are least apt to commit crimes and things like that, those are the neighbors you want, most likely. And I just see that there is a desperate need for senior housing in Simi Valley, and so even though I have a feeling it's going to be four to one, I would support this project as it is.
Okay. Before I call for a, well, we're going to have a reading of the resolution, and I'm going to ask Ms. Smith, I think the easiest way to get this done properly is to have the resolution as is suggested in the staff report, and instead of approving, disapproving. And I think that that would be the resolution, as it appears, would be moved. So I'm going to ask you to read the resolution, adding DIS for disapproving. Very good?
I have no amendments.
Well, there's no amendments, we're just disapproving. I don't, you know, I don't, it would be as amended if it was approving, because we talked about limiting the seven, et cetera.
You can do it first.
Siri, thanks, all right, anyway. All right, so do you understand? All right, may I have a reading of the resolution? Well, you know what? I need to speak to the city attorney. Can I have?
Yes, today. Right?
Yeah, because the director of the board recommended a denial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Read the resolution. I expect it would be under, under the decision.
Yeah.
Resolution number SVPC03-2019, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley recommending to the city council approval of GPA 92, ZS 712, TT 5916, PDS a 51-unit senior townhome complex located at the western terminus of Walnut Street at the northern terminus of Lemon Drive.
Chair will entertain a motion. Commissioner Mann?
I move to adopt a resolution recommending denial of the project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Mann, seconded by Commissioner Castleberry. Call for the vote. So a yay vote would be to support denial. Correct? All right?
A yes is no.
Okay, the motion passes denying a recommendation of the, recommending a denial of the project. The appeal period is five days for the general plan amendment, 10 days for the tentative trap act, and 14 days for the zone change and planned development permit. This item will proceed to the city council with the recommendation of the planning commission.
Sorry, let me just correct that, if we had... No, that's correct.
Very good. All right, we're done. Just remember, remember, this is going to the city council, okay? So, very good.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you to have any conversations you want to have outside the lobby, because we can hear you, and we have a little more business to complete. Okay, new business? There is no new business? Oral communications and reports?
Yes, thank you Chairman Hodge. On March 25th, we took an urgency ordinance to the city council, and this was regarding the wireless, small cell update to our wireless code. And we also took another ordinance, a non-urgency ordinance, it's a standard ordinance, so we'll be doing a second reading on that. This is because of the changes that are being passed down by the Federal Communication Commission to, by the FCC, that affects all local jurisdictions, and by adopting this ordinance, we maintain compliance. It gave us really the most leverage and power to make sure we don't allow for non-appreciable design standards of small cell antennas that we don't support. So we did approve a new design standard that, as an intermediary, I think will be very functional. And again, we'll see as the law keeps playing itself out if there's any further changes, but for right now, we're in compliance. On April 22nd, we actually have two general plan amendment pre-screenings that'll be going to the city council. One is for the property over at Yosemite and 118, and that one was for the city council about a year ago. They're proposing a change in residential density from low to, again, I think it's about, it was either moderate or medium on that property as well. And then down at the corner here of Tappo Canyon and Guardian Street, there's a proposal to change the general plan from business park industrial to general commercial to allow for a residential care facility. So both those items will be going on the April 22nd city council. Other than that, the next scheduled meeting of the planning commission is April 17.
Very good. Do any commissioners, the staff is, well, that was, that was staff. Do any commissioners have anything to report?
I have two quick things.
Go ahead.
I attended the Chamber of Commerce's State of the City address today, which was very informative, and it was nice to see that housing and planning really featured as a prominent goal for the city over the next year. The other thing I would like to add is that I want to request that we agendize an update on the Tappo Street specific plan for a future planning commission meeting.
Very good. Anyone else?
No.
Mobile home rent mediation board?
Nothing tonight.
Tree advisory board?
Nothing tonight.
This concludes the meeting of April 3, 2019. The next scheduled meeting will be April 17, 2019. The meeting is adjourned.